Tess, Tess, can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear, if you can hear me, raise your hand. All right, very good. Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call this special joint meeting of the Lancaster City Council and the Lancaster Planning and Zoning Commission to order at 7:02 is what I have. I'm a little behind tonight. So, I will also give our Commissioner, Quinny Wright, the opportunity to open the P&amp;Z.
Okay. Hi, my name is Quinny Wright. I'm the Chair of the Planning and Zoning for Lancaster. I hereby call this meeting to order at 7:03.
Okay, very good. All right, we'll move right into our agendas. The first item is receive and discuss a presentation from Jacobs Engineering Group, Planning Consultant regarding the city's comprehensive land use plan. Consider a resolution accepting the market analysis study from the planning consultant as part of the comprehensive land use plan update. Does everybody hear me okay? All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, and Madam Chair, Members of P&amp;Z. This is a long-awaited state-of-the-city presentation by our consultants, which you met at the approval of the contract. The agenda will read as follows, and you have a copy of this presentation in front of you. The study of background and purpose, state of the city, including project planning process, the market potential, physical opportunities, stakeholder aspirations, strategic opportunity areas, a specific discussion about the northwest quadrant of the city, discussion, and then next steps. As you know, the Lancaster's existing comprehensive plan was adopted in February of 2002, and it established a solid framework for the city leadership to make land use, transportation, and infrastructure decisions over the past decade. Since the adoption of this plan, Lancaster's population has increased by 40 percent. Real estate trends have changed significantly across the DFW metroplex. The southern sector of Dallas County has become a major hub for logistics, and the Dallas campus of the University of North Texas has been established. The city is in need of a new comprehensive plan that updates the community's vision and guides future infrastructure improvements in a manner that leverages private sector investment to create an improved tax base. Lancaster's comprehensive plan is intended to be the umbrella document guiding every aspect of the city's future development and growth. So, it's what we want to be when we grow up. Plan components include the community development and future land use, transportation, infrastructure, economic development, open space and recreation, community character and design, historic preservation, and public facilities. With that, I'd like to introduce to you again Mark Bowers, who is with Jacobs Engineering, and he will give you an overview of the project planning process.
Thank you very much. And before I continue along, I'd like to introduce a couple of more people that you'll be hearing from this evening. We have Ann Ricker with us from Ricker Cunningham, and Karen Walls with Strategic Community Solutions. Karen is a planner in the area, who will be working with us very closely on many of the implementation measures that come out of this, as well as on the overall plan itself, but also will be focusing in quite a bit on community and stakeholder involvement. And Ann's background is as an economist, market analyst, and really, we call her a community strategist, because she really works well with communities and looking at implications of development on the future of the community. So, I'm going to start things off with a real brief overview of the way we recently have been approaching these types of projects. And it may seem real simple, but a few years ago, we had a little bit different approach. A few years ago, we would be focused quite a bit on trying to develop the vision of the community. We would look at the physical opportunities. In other words, we look at where the floodplains are, where the hilly terrain was, those different aspects where the infrastructure was existing already. And then we try to marry that with what the community aspired to be, and that essentially created the vision for the community or for the study area. But, over about the last 15 years, we've been working quite a bit with Ann Ricker, because we understand that truly, to make the vision a reality, we have to have that market potential. And we've got to be able to understand what that is. And so, truly, where the vision needs to lie is within that area where the market potential says, yeah, the market would accept that and would develop that type of product in the area. We have the right physical opportunities. We have the right parcel sizes, and those parcels are equipped with what we need for that development to occur. But, at the end of the day, if the community and the stakeholders aren't on board with it, then those other two don't matter, because they all need to come together to form that vision. So, that's the approach that we'll be taking as we move forward. At the end of the day, we pride ourselves in creating plans that are not our plans, but truly the community's plan. And we're just here to be facilitators to help that happen. So, I'm going to ask Ann Ricker to come up and talk first about market potential, and then each of us will talk about a couple of these other areas before the evening's over.
Coming back to that, that's why I put that there. Good evening, Council and Planning Commission. It was interesting to listen to Mark's description. You could also either call me the wet blanket or the cheerleader at any given opportunity, too, because I'm the one who tells you, based on your vision, yes, the market will come for that, or no, they won't, or they will if you do X, Y, and Z. And so, you know, I'm very realistic with my communities, but I don't stay stuck very long on, no, you can't have that unless it's so far afield. I like to spend my time on saying, this is what you have to offer. We're hearing your vision, and if we can just move things in this direction, or we can package things this way, or we can proactively go after certain kinds of different projects or types of land uses or that, you can proactively be a participant in your future. So, at that point, that's my favorite part, because that's when I get to be the cheerleader. So, as Mark said, one of the first things we do is, we take the community, but then we define what's called a trade area. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. If any of you own a retail business, you're absolutely familiar with it, or any kind of business, really, because what that means is, that's the area from which you would draw your customers, but it's also the area that you would have your greatest competition. So, it makes sense. If you're a home builder, that would be the area from which you would likely draw people to your product. And then, within that area, though, you're knowing that means that somebody else knows that, too. That's your competition. And so, what we do when we're doing a community planning effort like this is, we know that while we're planning for Lancaster, we also know that the different land uses that might occupy or set up within your community, they're not just competing with other businesses or land uses or markets just within the city of Lancaster. I always say, you know, retail markets don't respect municipal boundaries. They just know where they draw their customers from. And so, what we do is, we try then to define a trade area, which is what you see in the red line, that is broadly representative of all potential land uses that might locate somewhere within the community of Lancaster over some period of time, near-term, midterm, long-term. Now, the challenging part is, let's say, somebody owned a piece of ground right in the middle of the community, and they came to me and said, do a highest and best use analysis. Well, I would do a very customized trade area, just for that single property. When you're doing a community-wide effort, you have to be a little more broad in your interpretation. You have to go out a little bit farther, okay? So, that's what you're looking at there. So, it's just to say, what is this potentially competitive market for things that might happen in Lancaster? Now, one of the things we do here, and this is really just a sample, as we go into the community planning process in greater detail, and we start working with different stakeholders, you know, it's easy for people like myself to just get caught up in numbers, but I know what numbers mean. And we think it's critically important that in a community planning effort, that the people that participate in that feel just as smart as those of us who deal with these subjects every day. We want them to be part of the process and be able to make informed decisions. So, what we did a number of years ago is, we started moving towards graphs and maps and illustrations of those numbers. So, for instance, what you're looking at there on the left, and the source for this is North Central Texas Cog, Council of Governments. So, what they did was, you see how there's like all those little kind of shapes and that, and some have different shading? Those are census tracts, okay? So, we all have an address, and we have a zip code, but we are all also within a census tract. And what that map on the left is illustrating is, the darker the color, the more whatever that condition is. So, here is 2040 employment. So, what Cog is saying is that for those census tracts where the color is darker, there will be that many more employees within that census block. Now, the one caveat to this is that, when you get information from a council of governments, it's kind of what I refer to as a bottom-up analysis, okay? So, if you have a vacant piece of ground, and it's zoned a certain way, and it's got certain attributes, it's located to an interstate or something, it's going to tend to make their model say it's going to have a higher concentration of households or employment or something. What doesn't come into play in their models is the top-down analysis, which is that trade area analysis. How big is the pie? How much growth could there be? So, the bottom-up says, how much can we accommodate? But, the top-down says, how is the region going, and how could we competitively capture some of that? So, in our analysis that we do for you going forward, we do both. We do that physical capacity analysis, you know, even if the market's going to grow by X amount, could we even physically accommodate it in our community? But, we also bring in that top-down piece to say, yeah, I mean, there's this much growth, but it's tempered by other factors, like, could you accommodate it? Is the market for that a viable market going forward? All of that. So, we do the sandwich approach. On the right, what you're looking at is households. So, I mean, picture yourself, if you're a retailer, and you own a store, and you're looking at that, you're saying, wow, there's going to be a lot of households on that southern and eastern edge of Lancaster. Boy, if I had three sites to locate my retail store, all things being equal, access, visibility, and all that, I'm probably going to try and locate closer to where I see that many more rooftops. So, that's how this information can be very helpful. And then, another thing, and this is one of about 20 slides of information that we've already started to put together for you, but wanted to give you a sample. Another thing that we run into all the time is challenges associated with parcel ownership. So, the next three slides are really illustrating the same data, but just let me explain it here. So, what you see there is, so you see over on the left, down on the bottom, you've got, it says Dallas, and then you see that, kind of that pretty blue color, and then DeSoto's green, and it goes on for there. Now, the one that I want to draw your attention to is the black, okay? And that says out of state. So, if you just look at the key, and then you look at that map, what you see is, wow, okay, we've got a lot of property within the city of Lancaster that's owned by somebody in the city of Lancaster. Where we look at the black, we say, oh, okay, we do have some out-of-state owners here. And then, we look at some of the other metroplex cities that are represented as well. And the reason this is important, I'll give you an analogy. We do a lot of inner-city work, a lot of urban work, in addition to community, fringe community work as well. And many times, you'll see a lot more black there, a lot more out-of-state ownership, and this is incredibly difficult. And it often happens when you have like big apartment projects. And the reason it's difficult is, if you've got a property that's existing and it's improved, and the owner is out of state, it can be very difficult to track them down and have a conversation with them, you know, if they're not keeping their property up, or if the use they've got there is really tired, or they haven't improved their property, and you want to talk with them about, wow, let us share some market information with you. How can we talk to you and talk about the opportunities that are available, and ways that we, as a community, might be able to work with you to advance that? Well, if you have to track somebody down in California or something, that's a very difficult thing to do. Also, what happens with out-of-state owners frequently is that that property is part of a larger portfolio of assets. Sometimes, they just really don't even know they have it. So, it's all about, the more assets you have in a community that have localized, they have a conscience for the community, they have a heart in the community, they're looking at it, they're following all of you, the leaders. That's a good thing. And so, our takeaway from this was, you're in good stead. Now, what'll be important at the next level of detail will be, okay, looking at it from 35,000 feet, we're good. We've got a lot of local ownership. We could reach out, we could talk to these people, have conversations, share market information. But, when we start to drill down with the community about what their vision is, and we start to get into these very specific catalyst areas, if then we find out that a lot of the land within these potential catalyzing areas is out of state, it'll just be one of those things we have to consider and build a strategy around. And then, again, this map, or this table, just supports the same map, breaking down those actual number of parcels by ownership acres and value. And then, here, the pie chart is just another way to illustrate that. But, I think more than anything, we hope to give you some great comfort that, as we start to work with your community defining a vision, we're going to try and make all this information as absolutely understandable to them as possible, so that when we come forward with recommendations for you all, hopefully, they're up to speed. They get why you have to, or why you choose to make certain decisions. So, another thing we do, this is just a snapshot, is, so we take those numbers that kind of built up, those tables or those maps that I showed you. So, one of the things we did here was, we just looked at, these are just a sampling of indicators that we looked at to try and get a sense of the demographic profile. And what we did here is, we compared that trade area, that area in red, with the metroplex. And so, I always say, you know, data is interesting, but only when it's relative to what, okay? So, if I said, well, you had 2.3 people, average household size, okay, what does that mean? You know, I mean, you only understand when it's, excuse me, compared to something else. And so, what we chose for our other comparative area is the DFW metroplex. So, what gets really interesting when you look here, so there is a college degree disparity. Self-employment, there isn't so much. It's pretty close. And what's fascinating, and I'm going to show you when I get to one of the other slides, we also looked at psychographics. And actually, self-employed comes up quite a bit. And I'll take you through my thinking. When I see something like that, I start thinking about, oh, wow, how could we grow that? How could we support them with certain kinds of infrastructure and all that? So, this is an interesting indicator for me, that I want to continue to translate for you. Then, we look at incomes. Median household income, not so different than the metroplex. Per capita income, again, even almost less of a disparity. What you can infer from that is that if your per capita is pretty close, but you've got a greater disparity in your incomes, or household incomes, you probably have more people within households where the second person might not be working, okay? So, these are just things that pop for us. Income, when we get down to under 25K, pretty similar. So, people that aren't making as much, that's fairly close. People making 100,000 more, you actually have more than the metroplex on, overall. So, you know, one thing I love about things like this is, you know, when people are out there doing retail analyses, you know, retailers out there deciding on this community or another community, or this site or another site, they grab these stats, and they drop them down. I know what they're looking for, but sometimes, they're not looking hard enough. And this becomes part of the story we tell. I mean, I've got five stories just from that one table, that I could tell on your behalf as you try and go out and inform the market and try and attract things. But, again, I have to make sure that those things that I could tell a story about are actually things that you want to see. Okay, here's psychographics. So, the great thing about psychographics, I've been doing what I do for, I guess it's 26, 27 years. And I can tell you, in the early part of my career, when I would do like a market study for somebody who wanted to get a loan to develop their property, we really stuck with the demographics, which is a lot of census stuff, a lot of Cog stuff, and we also looked at the competitive market and trend, you know, if we've got X number of building permits, and we're trending this way and all that. Well, about 12 years ago, maybe a little more, two groups in the country started coming out with what's called psychographics. And what it means is that we all fit within one of 65 categories in terms of the type of shopping we do, the kind of house we want, generally, our value system, do we do public school or private school, you know, all those, kind of those nuances. And I always say, it puts a face on the numbers. And many times, I'll be in a community, and I'll say something like that, that we all fit in one of 65 categories, and somebody will get all grumpy with me, and they'll say, well, I'm 66, because you can't put me in a box. And I'm like, yeah, okay, that's interesting, but you're one of the 65, because we all are. I've already found my chapter, I hate it. It's like, how do you know I go to church that often? Or, you know, whatever it is. So, it's just this crazy thing. But, you know, the thing I like about it is, I always say that if there's 65 categories, and I'll go into a community, and I'll do this analysis, 85% of the folks that fall within these, or within a community, tend to fall with only, in only like 20 of the 65. So, unless you're in downtown Manhattan, where you'll get all 65, you'll get like a reasonable concentration, you go to almost anywhere else USA, and 85% of us are in just 20 categories. And it kind of makes sense. I mean, we're not exactly alike, but we tend to live near people that have similar values as us, because those are the assets we find in that community. And so, that made perfect sense to me when I got to thinking about it. So, all you're really looking at here, and this is for the trade area, and two things we'll do in the detailed analysis, this is your nighttime population. So, if you all own a home, or you have a home here, and you, let's say, you leave for work, this is you guys, or even if you stay for work. But, you also have people coming into your community that don't live here. Well, they won't get picked up in the nighttime population, right? Because they live somewhere else. And so, we can also do a daytime psychographic profile. And then, again, this is for the trade area, and I want to do one just for the city of Lancaster. And then, if you've got other cities you're kind of wondering about, and how you compare, just tell me what those are, and we can run those, and we can start to compare those. So, it gets kind of fun. I was going to just give you a quick sample of one of them. Let's see there. And these are really just the top categories. The reason, if you look at the bottom of the table, we used to not add that. We would just have total above segments, so you see that that's 47,000 households. Well, see, that only represents 60% of the households in the trade area. People used to look at that and go, well, we have more than that number of households in our trade area or our community. And I say, oh, yeah, these are just the top ones, okay? And then, also, what this table shows is, by lifestyle segment, how they're broken out. So, those are the top categories within three segments of your life. So, younger years, okay, you know, home, graduated from high school, maybe you're sticking around working, maybe you kind of left. Then, we have family life. Okay, you left, you went to school, but you really liked where you grew up, so you came back, maybe you're starting a family. And then, mature years, maybe you're starting to really get tired of your kids, the fact that they actually left and then came back again, and now you're figuring out how to get rid of them. And so, that's the group I'm in, right? So, that's that last group. So, we think it's meaningful to break them up, because if you're a home builder, you're a business owner, you know, you don't want just the top ones. You want to know, who is that person? Is that some person that I might be able to serve, based on what I provide? So, the one I pulled up was country casuals. So, that's the second one, in the younger years. Here's the description. Upscale, age 35 to 54. Says, there's a laid-back atmosphere in country casuals, a collection of middle-aged, upper-middle-class households that have started to empty nest. Most households boast two earners who have well-paying blue or white-collar jobs, or own a small business. Today, these baby-boom couples have the disposable income to enjoy traveling, owning time shares, and going out to eat, okay? So, see, that's so much more meaningful than just, we have X number of households in this income group. I mean, that speaks volumes about, wow, what might these people want compared to what they have. I'd be happy to give you guys a handout that's got a definition of every single one of these. Then, what we do is, you know, we forecast growth. So, for instance, we wanted to look at, we wanted to quantify, how much demand is there going to be for different kinds of land uses, knowing that within any one land use, you can have many, many, many different kinds of products. So, you know, how big is that pie out there in the trade area, in terms of how it's going to grow over the next 10 years? So, what you're looking at there is, single-family detached. I mean, there's a very large spreadsheet that sits behind this summary table. But, we're estimating, over the next 10 years, within that trade area, that red boundary we showed you, there'll be demand for about 16,000-ish, single-family detached homes, about 9,000 attached homes. And what that means is, an ownership product that isn't necessarily the traditional four to the acre. It can be a condo, it can be a row house, it can be a fourplex, it can be, you know, anything like that. But, those, the profile of those people, they don't want to mow a big lawn. And so, they're desiring a different kind of product. They can be people within your community that are trying to get out of the product they're in now, and move into something different, too. And then, rental apartments, and there's about 9,000. Now, again, there's price points within that. And then, I'll finish this, and I'll give you the caveat. So, then, about retail space, over the next 10 years, about 4.2 million, office 2.1, industrial 4.1. So, the caveat here is that this almost assumes, if you do nothing to try and inform what your community captures, what you want to attract, this is kind of what's going to happen to you. Now, what can happen within these is, you could get those 16,500, let's say, single-family detached units, and if there's a home builder out there, and they're just trying to unload a bunch of inventory, and they see the demand, they might come in and saturate the market like that. And then, another home builder could come in, and they saw the same kind of demand analysis, and maybe they're just six months behind, but all of a sudden, from their perspective, they can still find a way to make money, but you've got all this inventory. So, what we try and do is get as detailed as possible about, are these all homes that are priced 100,000, or 250,000, or 300,000, or how many within each price point? So, you can be out there in front of the market saying, here's an opportunity here. Do you have a product here? Because they're not always as smart. They're not always doing that level of detail of homework. And more and more, I like my communities being out there saying, hey, we're seeing the slippery slope, and we're going to have too much inventory, and here's this market niche that nobody's even addressing. So, I'm always trying to give you that information to share with them in some way. And then, the other thing is, this assumes that, almost do nothing. And that sounds rash, because I hear people say all the time. The market will take care of itself. And I always say, yeah, it sure will. It'll take care of itself, will not necessarily take care of the community it's in. And so, these numbers can change. You can inform these numbers up or down, okay? Through policies, through regulations, through incentives, through just proactive marketing, okay? So, this is just kind of your baseline. And then, without reading to you, because I want to make sure we get to the best part, which is really answering your questions and discussion, we've shared a number of slides with you that talk about emerging trends. A number of years ago, and actually, I'll say probably, you know, September 2008 was, you know, in my world, in the real estate world, you know, it all changed. And what happened was, you know, we used to do feasibility work that was really largely, is there market demand for it? And then, more and more, it became, well, is there market demand, and can you get financing for it? And then, and now, the third leg of this important stool is, is there market demand? Can you get financing for it? And is that a product that's sustainable going forward? So, let me give you a quick example. When I started my career in 1987, and I, you know, worked on some of my original office demand models, we used to plug in, based on employment growth, for people that were going to need office space, we used to plug in 250 square feet per employee, okay? So, think about it. It's like, okay, that's the hallways, common areas, cubicle size, some people have big offices, some have small. So, that was the average. I ran an office demand model a couple weeks ago, and I had it in at 180 per square foot, okay? So, in my career, I've done the transition from the big server- So in my career, I've done the transition from the big servers that sat in the closet that represented some of that space, all the way down to the laptops. And what Urban Land Institute, which is kind of the, on the forefront of, of real estate trends and that, is saying that by 2020, we'll be down to 100 square feet per employee. Now, think about that. So I'll get asked by people all the time, we've got a 20% vacancy in the metroplex. Won't all that office space have to get absorbed before anybody builds something new? And I'll say, you know what? A bunch of that's obsolete. Because what we want in our office space, what we need in our office space, that might not be able to be adapted to, to fit that. So some of it might just have to be empty, or torn down, or whatever. So we just have to be mindful about these trends, because they absolutely affect US communities. We just go on to retail. One quick retail example was, that last Christmas, 51% of people that went shopping at Christmas time, 51%, walked into a store, a bricks and mortar store, touched and felt something, and then walked out and ordered it on their cellphone. Okay? So what that means is, we still want bricks and mortar, we need that experience, we need to touch it, but they're just not going to carry it. It drives me insane. Every time my cellphone breaks, for some reason, I still think I can walk in and get a new one. And they're like, no, you can call and you can go online and they'll send you one. But, so what's happening is that retail space, the, the depth of those, the retail units is getting shorter and shorter and shorter. So that now, whereas it used to be about, you know, 50% display and 50% inventory, now it's going to like 80% display, and that 80% is getting smaller, and 20% is actually high on how much inventory. Because they just know, we've, we've gotten used to the fact that they're just not going to have it there. They're just going to send it to us. And so think about that. Those patterns are absolutely having an impact on the real estate out there. And then, you know, we talk about housing and that, and I think especially one thing that Karen and Mark and I see and have for, for years, is, you know, there's a real tendency, especially in the South, to think that everybody wants a single-family detached home. And, you know, I think with the last recession, you know, many people, even at the federal level, really questioned that. You know, they put it out there. And actually, what we're finding is, and some of it's because there's this big bubble of baby boomers, too, and we don't want to mow the lawn, but there are more and more people coming up, more and more younger people that are coming up, that don't necessarily have that shared value of mowing the lawn. Some of them want to travel more, and so they want a low-maintenance housing option. Also, the more technology-based we become, the more isolated, therefore, the coffee store becomes critical, because it might be the only conversation you have all day. And so all of that is informing, again, real estate. Yeah, this is fascinating. In the, in the census, in the 2010 census, it's the first time in history, there are now more people living alone in households than there are traditional families of a husband, wife, and a child. Okay? Think about what that means for real estate. Okay. I can't advance. There you go. I'll just keep doing that. And then here are some of the numbers and kind of what they want. Okay? And here you go, low-maintenance housing option. Yeah, that's kind of the fascinating thing. If you know, like downtown Fort Worth, downtown Dallas, if you go to some town center areas like Legacy, or South Lake, or something, and you look at the people that walk out of those residential units, they really are bookends. You know, they're the younger people that either are delaying having children, or they're living together, or they're married or divorced and have a part-time kid. And then there's the empty nesters at the other end, you know? And then there's that group in the middle, of course, because school, kids, whatever, they, they want the bigger spaces. But these two groups are really living together heavily in these places. And then another stat, 50-plus empty nesters are abandoning sprawling suburbs for pedestrian-friendly cities, towns, and planned communities, where they can walk, not drive to shops and offices. An interesting stat related to that, many regional, national health organizations, you know, like tri-county health or things like that, will show up at planning meetings now and really advocate for, for different kinds of developments, where there is this more compact development integration, vertical or horizontal integration of uses, because what they've found is that people either choose it because they want that, that walkability and to get out of the car, or they morph into that and like it. And they know what the health benefits are and what the financial savings are to that. So they're showing up now and advocating. It's, it's kind of a new phenomenon for us. And then this just speaks to what the professional investors and, and that are looking for in terms of development. I think any community in the metroplex, really in the country, in the last two years, saw that coming right out of the recession, the one thing that everybody was willing to finance was apartments. And of course, the fear is that you get too much of that. And, you know, hopefully, for communities, they know how much to capture that makes sense because the community wants it, but then to turn off the spigot before you start getting too much. And again, this process will hopefully give you some sense of that. I think that's just, I'm just not going to read all these. But have fun. Call me up if you have any questions. I love talking about that stuff. And then I think, I'm just going to leave off here and you're going to pick up. Is that right? One thing, I guess we wanted to leave you with, and this will be a recurring theme, as Mark says, make some comments, and Karen as well. One thing we've found over the years is that there's just a couple of principles that are really, really good to follow as you go through a community planning process. Number one, the marketplace continues to protect and leverage community assets. So what, what you want to do is take the best of what you are and protect and leverage that. But you also want to, if you can, look beyond this, near term, whatever your near term is, and, and be thinking about, how can I take care of? It's, it's almost like, if any of you have met with a financial planner, this is perfect. And, and they'll say, okay, you need to do a financial plan where you really take care of, 80% of your money needs to go towards your lifestyle, right? You can't put so much in the stock market that you can't liquidate it quickly if you have children at home and they have a, a medical emergency. But you've got this 20%, that's kind of where you're building for your future. I like to think of that for communities, too. There are certain decisions you have to make, because you know, you're the decision-makers, that you have to make to take care of your community, to maintain a lifestyle or improve a lifestyle. But there's got to be a percent out there where you're building for a vision, you're building for something better, or something more, or something down the road, or something for the next generation. And, you know, Central Park's a perfect example. If they had not set Central Park aside in New York and said, this will not be just one more place where somebody makes money, can you imagine not having that asset there? Every community leader has to, to try, to take that 20% and look forward and invest in that. For communities like yourselves, gateways are often that place. That's that identifier. Otherwise, you, don't you just hate it when people say, oh yeah, I drive in one community and I cross the street and I'm in another one and I didn't even know I left it? Well, we got to fix that. You know, we got to know, even if it's the color of the street signs, we got to let them know that they're here. And gateways, getting them off major transportation routes, those are critically important. So the one up near the university, critically important. That is a rare opportunity, you have nowhere else in your community, where you could make a gateway that makes a statement and capitalizes on an asset. If you don't have a core, you know, grow one. And I said heart first, but that sounded terrible, like you don't have a heart, why don't you grow one? But, but the idea is, many communities, suburban communities, will say, well, we don't have a downtown. You know, we were a suburban community and we kind of evolved. All right, we'll create a downtown then. You can create one, nobody said you can't do that. You don't have to have authentically historic buildings, you can make buildings that look historic. And if you've got something old there and you want to build on that, that's great, too. But you should always have a place where people can come together and, and be reminded that, that this is their community. Don't ignore the obvious, but don't be subsumed by it. And, and that, for your economic development folks, that's, that's that terribly difficult balancing act, which is a bird in the hand, but if you have too much of it, then you don't have diversification. And then you're, you know, vulnerable to one person, one landowner, one industry. So as much as you can kind of stay out of that and have lots of people to work with, lots of landowners to work with, more land use choices, the better off you'll be as a community. So that's, that's diversify as much as possible, and then absolutely be authentic. So again, you'll, you'll hear these themes as we go through tonight and be coming back
Thank you, Ann. And I don't think we came right out and said it tonight, but one of the key things that, that we told city staff that we would be, we would be striving to make sure you had at the end of the day, is an overall comprehensive plan that is fiscally responsible. In other words, everything that Ann is doing is going to be bringing information to this team and to the community, so that the land use decisions that are being made are going to be made within the realm of, these are the fiscal realities and what it means to you from a tax-based standpoint as you move forward. And, and obviously, those trade-offs that you make will be based upon the value system of, of this, this group and the community at large, but we will be bringing that information forward as to what these different vision elements mean from a fiscal standpoint. And not only that, but how can you utilize some of these, short-term, to build opportunities further down the road, so that you're leveraging each decision that's made. So that was the overview of the market and the, the types of things that Ann has already started looking at to understand the community and give us some basis in what the, how the market is perceiving the community. And again, it's not that, that, that is set in stone, because part of what this vision needs to do is change some of the perceptions where they need to be changed. So the next piece is the fiscal, the physical opportunities. I was saying fiscal too much a moment ago. The physical opportunities, and I'm going to go through these very quickly, because this is more the, the common type of thing that you would see us looking at in a comprehensive plan. But just to orient you on the first map, right here is Interstate 35. So this, these are your city limit boundaries, which I'm, I'm sure you, you're all aware of that. But this would be 35 on this particular map, this would be Interstate 20. Daniel Dell Road is right in this area, Winter Green right here, we have Belt Line right in here, and then I guess Bear Creek would be right down in this area. And then going north-south, we have Jefferson, which is coming through right here into your downtown area, and then we have Dallas Avenue coming through right here. And then obviously, this dark line right here would be the railroad going through the community. Airport is located here, University of North Texas at Dallas, right here, Cedar Valley College, just to hit a few of the landmarks. So with that in mind, some of the key things that we're looking at are existing land use and obviously, we've, we've updated this, very much looking at aerial photos over the past few years to identify what changes have been made since your, your existing land use plan was, was last put in place. And obviously, there have been some changes up in the northwest sector of the city, and as I mentioned a moment ago, the airport is right down in this area. Today, the majority of the property, although it's a slighter majority than it was a few years ago, is going to be agricultural and vacant properties. The second one is existing zoning. Again, you're seeing that really, this quadrant of the community, the northwest quadrant, has experienced most, most of the, the growth and therefore has been zoned for uses other than agricultural uses, which are occurring south of the creek. Existing development patterns, again, this gives you a clear picture of which parcels are already developed versus those that are undeveloped. And you see that you're, you're probably close to 50/50 at this point with what's developed and undeveloped. And so as we move forward, I think we're going to be looking at opportunities to strengthen some of those great assets that you already have, some of the, for instance, the downtown area, or the, the core assets, like the existing neighborhoods that are in place. But we may also be wanting to talk to you about opportunities to change the direction and things like portions of the I-35 corridor. Is that something that provides opportunity for new types of development to, to redevelop some of the older buildings that maybe have outlived their lifespan? But again, those are the types of things that we would be bringing forward to you than the community to see if that's appropriate for those areas. Existing parcel size, again, we've started to rank these as parcels over 20 acres. So you can see that there are a number of very large parcels over 20 acres through the community, that lightest blue. And then the parcels that are less than two acres are really made up of a lot of the single-family residential developments in the community. Existing sanitary sewer, this is going to be real interesting to us from a phasing standpoint. For instance, you, you saw on that, that map a few minutes ago, that there's still a lot of undeveloped parcels in this portion of the community. So as you have pressures to do something in this area perhaps, fiscally, again, that's a decision that needs to be made and we need to be sharing information with you about what's the most appropriate way for the community to continue to develop, so that you're not stretching those, those valuable resources that you have for infrastructure improvements. And so this is essentially looking at the Bear Creek Sewer Shed. Now, one of the other key things we noticed, not only from a phasing standpoint, is that there are some areas that are more easily sewed. For instance, where you've already developed is probably one of the most easily sewed portions of the land from a terrain standpoint, topographic standpoint. But the area on the east side of town is fairly easily sewed, it's just that some of the, the basic infrastructure is not in place yet. Whereas the area just to the south of Ten Mile Creek is probably the most difficult to sewer. And the question that we'll help answer is, should it be sewed in the future? What's the cost of providing sewer coverage in that area from a sanitary sewer standpoint versus the type of return that the development might bring? Again, that's a fiscal question that needs to be answered. Existing thoroughfares within the community, we've also looked at existing parks and open space, existing public facilities. We're real impressed with the level of public facilities that have been provided to the citizens of Lancaster and venues like this. Existing natural features, really looking more at the tree cover areas. Again, in North Texas, those areas we consider to be unique, because you don't find a lot of heavily tree areas in this part of the, the country. As well as the existing topography, and that starts to show, the darker the color, the steeper the slope, and the more difficult to develop large paths. Those will probably be larger lots with smaller buildings on them in the future to be efficient with the development pattern. And then just existing special districts, which we thought was real important, because at one time, the community looked at some of these areas as being strategic assets. And we know that specific plans were developed for each of those areas, and we need to be responsive to those plans and perhaps look for ways to, to enhance them and make them even better. But that, that basic idea is something that we felt was very strong and important to recognize. And then finally, for our team, we developed a composite suitability, where those areas that are, are lighter are those areas that are most suitable for more suburban types of development versus some of the areas that have difficulties, either because it's a floodplain where we should not be developing, or areas that maybe have steep slopes and other challenges, that perhaps would be more suitable for lower-density development. So those types of things have already started to influence some opportunities and constraints in our minds, but we really need to test that with the community going forward and see if there's something we're missing as we start providing input to that overall comprehensive plan. So those are two of the pieces. We talked about the, the market piece that has to be in place in order for a vision to be a reality. The physical opportunities have to be acknowledged, and we want to take advantage of those things that are unique to Lancaster. Oftentimes, we, we pride ourselves in developing comprehensive plans that are unique to each community. And there's a couple of ways we do that. The, the makeup, the, the population of each community is always going to be different. Their values, culture are going to be a little bit different from community to community. So that's one of the key areas that makes them unique. But also, these physical elements that exist are going to be unique from community to community. So we like to look at those as assets that we can build upon as well. So I'm going to ask Karen Walz to come up now and talk a little bit about how we're suggesting moving forward, some of the key questions we may be asking the community in developing what the true stakeholder aspirations are.
Thank you, Mark. At the beginning of the presentation, Mark said that our, we view our role as working with you all to create a comprehensive plan that really is your community's comprehensive plan. It is not our plan coming to you, but really one that reflects the community. And so as we looked at, just to go back for a second to the, the little chart that you saw at the beginning, I want to focus now on that last, that third circle of the stakeholder aspirations, because that really is just as critical to understand what the priorities are, what the strategic opportunities are that you have in this community. are, what the strategic opportunities are that you have in this community, how you want to inform the market, how you want to make your investments in terms of things like infrastructure. So I'm going to be brief at this point, but I want to share with you a few of the things that we see about getting people involved and also some of those strategic questions that we've identified so far as a starting point, hopefully for conversation tonight and then out with the public. So to me, the long-term success in any community really requires taking advantage of what we understand about the market and what we understand about those physical opportunities. But we also have to reflect what the stakeholders want. What do you in this community want for your future? It's not just something about the maps and numbers. It's about what do the people that have a stake in Lancaster want to see as we look ahead? That's very critical to setting priorities and making the decisions in the direction that this plan ought to offer you. So as we go through this process, we have a couple of objectives about that engagement of the public. And we have several different tools that we expect to use, and I want to just go through those for you very briefly tonight. But from my perspective, having worked with lots of individual communities, with regions, with counties, with all kinds of different groups, what I believe is the most important is firstly, to have a process that gives all stakeholders some kind of an opportunity to be involved and to make their points, have a say, help shape that decision. Secondly, we know that not everybody wants to be involved in the same way. People have different time constraints. They have different things they enjoy. Different generations these days have different approaches. So we want to make sure that anybody who wants to be involved can do it in a way that fits their needs and fits their objectives. They don't have to fit in our mold. We want to give them a lot of opportunities. And so that's part of what we want to do. The other part of what we think is important is to get that stakeholder input at a time where it's going to be valuable to the analytical work, to the policy discussions, so that it can play an equal role in knowing what's important, what the priorities should be. So it doesn't do us a whole lot of good to ask people, what's your vision, if we've already decided on a vision and we're asking them, you know, two months later on in the process. So we try to time things so that it will be as effective as possible. So at the end of the day, if someone gets involved, they feel like their time was well-spent and that the city took it into account. You're not going to do everything that everybody says that they think you should do, but that they feel like they've been heard. So to do that, you can see on the screen here a couple of the major types of tools that we expect to use over the course of the process. Ongoing involvement will happen, obviously, all the way along. Web and email, these are major ways that most people use these days to communicate, for us to share information as we go through the process, and for us to tell people about meetings and for us to get that input. These days, social media is equally important, and particularly for those younger generations of folks, we've got to have that. If somebody's main connection is on Facebook, we need to be on Facebook. So we've got that as part of this as well, and that's all integrated. We also expect to use some online surveys and questionnaires to give people a chance to provide more detailed input, even if they can't come to an event that we'll be structuring as part of this process. Speaking of those events, there are really three major types of activities that we anticipate. Firstly, is stakeholder interviews. And these are interviews with one person or a small group of people to get a good understanding of their concerns in this community. And so that will be folks like people who are major property owners and major developers in the community, folks who have a major interest here and who are doing some of that development. We want to have individual interviews to understand what their concerns are, what they see as opportunities. We expect to be doing those interviews during the October-November timeframe, so that'll be coming up fairly soon. The community charrette, which you see here, is a much wider, open kind of a meeting where we try to engage lots of people, get everybody together in a very interactive way to help look at alternative scenarios. What are the choices that you have based on all this analysis? And so we'll be doing that after the first of the year, followed up with an open house at the point where there are some final recommendations. Lastly, it's very important that there is representation all the way along so that whatever comes out of this document works well with all of your ongoing decision-making processes and priorities and experiences. And so you'll be talking, I believe, later on about having a representative steering committee to work closely with the consultants, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the city council. All of you will be communicating and discussing things with you as we go along so that we're in sync. We don't want to kind of come to the end and have something and say, well, this is exactly the opposite of what you all have already been, you know, chosen to do. So we'll be working with you on all of those. I wanted now just to throw out a couple of ideas to get you thinking, get some dialogue going, I hope, this evening about some possibilities for some of those strategic statements of the aspirations of the Lancaster stakeholders. Right now, we haven't started all of those processes that I just described to you. So this is based on what we've been able to learn so far. We've looked at the city council's goals and objectives. We've had an all-day session with the city staff, and we've tried to absorb as much as we can of recently developed plans that have been created for the community. And the research that you've just been hearing about. So the ideas that I want to share with you are initial ones. This is not in any way a final version. But I think it's important to start thinking strategically right now as we get into this process. So civic assets, I'm going to give you just a few examples to, again, get the dialogue going. Lancaster already has the kind of downtown that a lot of places... Create. You've got it already. So how can the direction of this plan take advantage of and build on the asset of that downtown? That's an important strategic question for us as we go forward, for you and for the stakeholders. You also have a very important civic asset in UNT Dallas. That campus is an important investment in this part of the region. There isn't anything else like that that's going to be happening. So you've got kind of the one shot there, and you've already got a campus district. So the question is, how can you get the best possible return on investment for that public asset that already is sitting right there? What's the best way to use the development and those connections to your community? A third area, and Mark mentioned this a minute ago, the city investments. You all have a really incredible and impressive set of civic investments that you've made as a community. And I think many people in the region don't really have a good understanding of what all is available here. So when you're talking to that market, it doesn't really know what you've got to offer. So how can we build on the... How can this plan help you communicate that opportunity and those assets? Neighborhoods, of course, are a very important part of any community. And to me, there are two kinds of strategic questions for Lancaster at this point and with this planning process. One is that you have a goal of healthy, safe, and vibrant neighborhoods. You've got a lot of existing neighborhoods. You've got some really wonderful programs for kids, the STEM classes and so forth. Again, not everybody understands that. Not everybody understands those market characteristics that Ann showed you. So the question is, how can we keep those existing neighborhoods healthy, safe, and vibrant over time, not just right now, but over a longer period of time? What kind of reinvestment? What do we need to do so that they stay healthy and don't fall into a pattern of decline? At the same time, you've got opportunities for new development in that land that's not yet developed. How can you develop new neighborhoods that appeal to those new kinds of demographics, those psychographics that Ann showed you? You've got opportunities to pick those niche markets that don't exist in this area. How do you want to take advantage of that? In terms of economics, there are just a couple ideas that I'm going to throw out here. The first is logistics. Obviously, you all have a great deal of growth there. You've got a great deal of positive development happening there. And you've got the quality and the intensity of development in terms of the buildings that are really attracting tenants. And the quote you see there is from a recent article in the Dallas Morning News about the advantages that you all have. But the question is, what should you be doing now so you stay competitive in that logistics market? How do you avoid an oversupply, putting everything into... Putting so much that you're competing against yourself in the different parts of town? How do you keep from having all your eggs in that one basket in terms of job growth? How do you keep that diversity? So those are questions to think about as we look at this plan. And then the airport, that's another really important and valuable asset that you have from an economic standpoint. It connects with logistics, but it can appeal to other things, too. So how do we want to take advantage of that? What are the top priorities to use that airport as part of a long-term, stable, and thriving economic base in this community? What strategies are going to keep that diversity here, again, so you don't have all your eggs in one basket of one kind of industry or one kind of an ownership? Medical is another one of these areas, and it supports your objective of a diversity of commercial businesses. What kinds of public policies and what kinds of investments can make the most in terms of economic growth out of that existing medical district? Again, how do we take advantage of that, which is an unusual asset that not all other communities have? So again, these are some of those strategic questions that we've started to identify based on the research we've done so far, based on looking at your goals and objectives. As we go through this process and engage more stakeholders, I'm sure we're going to hear other ideas, too. And I hope we'll get some dialogue from you all this evening about some of these things. But as we see it, this planning process should be the forum for that dialogue, and we should come out of it with a plan that helps you make good strategic choices that achieve the kind of community that you want to see in Lancaster today and also into the future over time. With that, I'm going to ask Mark, I talked about some of those strategic choices that you have. Mark is going to highlight just a few of the areas that we see as being involved with.
Thanks again, Karen. We're on the home stretch here. We've gone through those three key elements, and I hope we've answered any questions you have in your minds about how each of those fit together. And again, in informing that vision, there's a lot of room in there at the middle for a lot of different visions, a lot of different economic elements, a lot of physical opportunities, stakeholder opportunities. It's just how do all of those come together? And what proportion of each of those do you want to form your plan as you move forward? So we took things a little bit further because one of the first things we always do on comprehensive plans is try to get a feel for what's in place already. You know, it used to be that we'd go out to the community, and again, I hate to make it look like we were so naive because I said the same thing earlier about the market, but we'd go out and we'd start talking about single-family neighborhoods, and we'd ask the question, what should that be in the future? Well, I can't think of any time, maybe just one or two, where people came back and said it should be anything other than what it was. So really, it became more about those are core assets in the community, and what can we do to continue to strengthen those? And Ann touched, or Karen touched on it, related to single-family residential, but there may be other things as well that are such strategic core assets that you want to make sure that that's there for the long term. So what can we do to have policies and things in place to just continue to enhance them and make sure that they're as valuable in the future as they are today? But then there are other areas that might be ripe for reinvestment. It might be time to start to relook at some things and say, how could we do something different right there that's more in line with what would support the surrounding community as we move forward? And then obviously, there are some areas that are undeveloped where, depending on what the market's saying and what the community is saying, there may be multiple opportunities of what could happen within those areas and what that vision could be. So within those areas, we would want to bring forward to you some results from an economic standpoint as to what those different alternatives might bring in creating a viable city in the future from a fiscal standpoint, so that you'll have some of that information. But it's not only about that. It'll be about the quality of life that we're trying to create as well. So as we started looking at that, there's an interesting exercise. I hope city staff found it interesting in the state-of-the-city work session, that we go through with each of the staff members, we don't allow them to talk about it at the time, but we give them three different colored dots. For instance, we'd say, okay, those things that are in the community that you think are the most valuable thing that you have in the community today, and you've got to make sure if we do nothing else, we don't mess that up, and go put this color dot on that. And then what are those areas of the community that, if we do that right, it will create the biggest thing that's ever happened in this community that we'll all be proud of? And where are those areas, and what is that? And then the third was, what are those areas of the community that have really been great assets in the past, but they're no longer in alignment with the market, or maybe it's a lot of empty space within certain buildings or those types of things? And what should we be doing to try to revitalize that and maybe reimagine what it is and make it something different in the future? So it's always fun because, keeping in mind that we have the city manager, we have planners in the room, we have engineers in the room. And so some of the answers became a sewer line, and then other answers became a neighborhood. But every answer was really good. But that starts to inform how we start to look at some of these areas from a standpoint of, you know, how do we envision these areas? What do we take to the community and give them that basis to start to build upon? Now, I'm going to say that we're planning at this point, when we have our first steering committee meeting, to do a very similar exercise. And it's always fun to see what city staff said versus what a steering committee said. And there's always things that come out that nobody would have expected to come out as being a great attribute or a great opportunity for a community because somebody in that room had that vision that was able to bring it to it. So as we started looking at this, again, we talked about those three key areas, the existing strategic assets that create unique opportunities for Lancaster within those existing asset areas. Those existing assets, and again, they're highlighted, let me grab the right tool here. The existing asset areas are those that are more in the orange color right here. And so we talked about those a little bit earlier. The campus district, we talked about some of the areas where logistics has been occurring, and that's certainly a shorter-term opportunity that the city is facing right now. The medical district here where the hospital is, the downtown area right here, and certainly, the airport is one of those strategic assets. But that's first past some of the things that we started to hear that are those key things that if we really do them right, they're going to make us proud to be citizens and representing Lancaster as we go forward in the future. So the second thing we started to look at is core strength areas. And again, we talked about it. It's those key areas that establish the basic character and permanence of the community. The core strength areas include many of the existing single-family neighborhoods that are within your community. And what we're going to do within those areas is really focus more in on what are the policies and goals that need to be in place to ensure the permanence of those areas and make sure that they're sustainable for the long run. So again, that's really that central core area of the city, with the exception of the downtown area right here and some of the areas along 35 and Interstate 20. Again, first past, that was our thought. And then the third area are those yellow areas, the strategic opportunity areas. And many of those are greenfield areas. They're areas that are undeveloped today. And then some of those, you'll see, are along Interstate 35 where we might go to the community and say, is there an alternative vision for what we want that corridor to be? Because certainly, that is where your community is very visible to the region as well as the state. I mean, that's the NAFTA highway. And a lot of cars will be coming through there, and that will be the image of Lancaster as all those travelers come through the area. And what can you do to encourage folks to stop as they're going through that area? So certainly, we saw those as being an opportunity to look at some strategic opportunities. So what we're suggesting for those areas is that those would be the areas we take forward to the community and develop multiple scenarios and say, you know, this area right here, if we made some infrastructure improvements, well, that's probably not the best area because a lot of people may have an opinion on, certainly on where that's going, but certainly south of the creek, and I'm losing that. There's some areas in here, or some of the areas in here, that might be simpler examples of, you know, the future may be much more open on what can happen in those areas. So we want to see what the market would support and go to the community with, get their ideas on the multiple different visions for that area, whether it's fairly suburban residential, or because there's a new tollway that will be in this area in the future. Should it be an office core? Will the market support that? Or the third might be, well, we think it's low-density residential because of infrastructure costs in the area. Well, then we would be able to run the numbers for each of those scenarios and be able to come back to the community and say, this is how each of those would perform. So what is the mix? What's the right perspective that's really getting you what you want from a community goal standpoint, but that you can continue to build upon fiscally as you move forward? So we will be asking you, as we move forward, I think, to take a look at that map as a preliminary map and show us if you support that as a good plan for moving forward in the strategy of how we'd be approaching the community with each of these areas. So finally, we promised that we'd share a few thoughts on the northwest quadrant of the city because certainly, there are a lot of things happening in that area from a logistics standpoint. And I think if you had property available today, it very well could be... could be absorbed in the near future. So Ann is going to share some thoughts with you on some of the questions you may have in mind about that area.
Okay, three more slides, and then we're all finished here. Let's see here. Thank goodness, right? So, you know, the beauty of going through and the fact that you've got questions in this area, the beauty of these next few slides is, again, to kind of give you a preview of how we're going to do this within all of the areas of your community. So as Mark said, you know, we start kind of big picture, and we look at the market, and then we're doing the bottom-up, and we're looking at the physical, and we're saying, "How does that match?", and as Karen said, we still need that input from the community. But then, what we do with all that is then continue to refine, refine, refine. So Mark took you through that preliminary identification of those catalyst areas, and now we want to just say, "Okay, let's just, for example, let's just drill down on this one." And so as you all know, you know, you've got this sweet spot here from an industrial and in particular logistics standpoint, and really supporting office as well. You know, you've got 35 and you've got 20. When, you know, I touched on trends and emerging trends and all that, hands down, any specialist in the country will tell you that demand and job growth and the healthiest economies are really our gateway communities, and that's not the little gateways we were talking about for you, but we're talking from a national standpoint, so the gateways into the country. So because you've got all that stuff going on in South Texas and Houston and all that, and anywhere where you've got a port, now you're looking at your transportation routes, and again, you guys are right, you know, you've almost got the 100% corner there. So it makes perfect sense that there would be even more demand here, definitely along the whole route and other communities, too, but this is in particular quite, quite the sweet spot for that. Remember Mark mentioned, he showed you all those, those maps, and in a perfect world, and what we've started to talk about is as we go through with the community and we're sharing all this information, think about what he said, "So I've got, I've got the market demand." And then he showed you zoning, okay? So picture that almost like on a clear Mylar piece of paper, and let's say we lay that over a base area map. And then he did existing infrastructure, and then let's picture putting that on clear Mylar and laying that over. And so we're looking at existing infrastructure, and we're looking at zoning, and then we're looking at land uses, how compatible and all that. And, oh, and then the ownerships and the 20-acre tracts and all that. And we start to layer all that information. Now, we do that in our head, but when we're working with the community, if we physically can lay all that information on top of itself, then we start to, I mean, things pop. It's like, "Oh, my gosh, that's the only place we could do that today and capitalize on that market opportunity." Or there's so much demand, we need to get ahead in our capital improvement planning to start looking at where we might be able to accommodate that. Oh gee, does that match up with the vision? So it's that constant iterative dialogue that we're going through. So, you know, as I said, it makes perfect sense that you've got this pressure, because you've got regional pressure, and it's just bearing down, and these are the most obvious locations, but oh, then there's that 20% I talked about. So, you know, if you do that exercise, which we've done, we say, "Wow. Here, maybe compared to over here where we don't have the infrastructure, could you ever capitalize on that near-term market opportunity?" Now, it's going to want to push. I mean, you're going to want as much as you can get, but then you have that incredible asset, that thing, that one of, a handful of things, just like every community, that is so unique for you. And how, what's a long-term vision for that? How long are you willing to wait for that? How big should that area be? Should we make it, encourage it to come down here? Or will it be here, or will it happen here first? We need to answer all those questions. So, you know, as we go forward with you, you know, we are absolutely cognizant of this incredible asset, but we have to speak with you and talk about the consequences of near-term versus long-term opportunities, and if we do something here, can we then do that somewhere else? So that, you know, those two things, logistics and the campus district, are both a near-term and long-term opportunity that we think you could absolutely build a whole strategy around. And then just drilling down even farther within this, this segment, you know, the area of I, you know, I-20 and 35 and Houston School Road and south of Daniel Dale, you know, as we said, it's absolutely ripe for logistics, and I would even go a step farther, too, and say, and, and supporting office as well. Incredible access, you know, you capitalize on a strength that reaches beyond the metroplex in terms of meeting a need, you've got the utilities there. You know, it's already being upgraded in terms of access. And then I would even argue that were that to, to take advantage of that opportunity, I know you've got very little land here, but we just keep hearing about how much kind of demand there is for more commercial services in support of some of your daytime population, and to the extent that we could have a more efficient land use there to support that. And, you know, it's compatible, and we don't see that, that many conflicts with existing uses. So, you know, where I leave you here, where we leave you as a team, is, you know, for a long, long time, you know, I could never do what you do, but, but I, I constantly look at these leadership bodies, and they're, they're frequently presented with these choices of, "Well, the land zoned X, or so-and-so wants to do this, and so I guess that's it." And, and I guess we've taken it on as our responsibility to say, "We honor whatever the choices are you have to make. You know so much more than we could ever." But one thing we want to do for you is, is give you as much information for your decision-making as possible. So in terms of land use, we all have grown incredibly passionate about the fact that what happens in the community development department has an incredible impact on what happens in the city manager's office and with the city budget as well. Every land use decision has a ripple effect. It has a fiscal impact that affects every single resident within your community. It is not just the landowner themselves, it absolutely is the landowner. And, and I, just like anybody else, honor those, the rights and the vision of the individual pieces, but it's foolish to think that a specific piece of ground is an island. It, it has a ripple effect. So one of the pieces of information we always want to bring into the fold as you make decisions, and we'll do this throughout the process, is take, take one scenario on a land, a piece of land or an assemblage of land, and run out what the fiscal impact is to the community, and then compare that to another one. It's not to say that this is the only thing you should look at, but what I would argue is very few cities are even looking at this. They're just looking at zoning and, and entitlements and that. And we'd say, "Why not look at this, too?" And so what, what you see here is, we took a, an existing piece of ground, we took the acres, okay, it's the same piece of ground. We took one land use that, building-to-land ratio, meaning how much coverage, is there actually an improvement? Perfect example is you'll have like a used car dealership when you're driving down a commercial corridor, and it's just all parking lot with cars on it, and then there's a little hut? Well, you're not making any money on that, you know, I mean, on the little hut, right? So, so we look at the improvement, how much coverage is there with, of an improvement? So under one scenario, you know, it's the hut, and on this one, there's obviously more improvement coverage, and then that ties to the square footage, so that's that relationship percentage. And then how many employees, too, obviously, that's oftentimes an important thing. And then what's the value per square foot of that land and improvement? So the land value, the building value, the total property value, the annual property tax that it generates. So we all know that, you know, we all pay taxes, and so there's revenue to the community, but there's also impact to the community from different kinds of land uses. So then we have the employees' average income per employee, okay? Let's keep that the same. Percent of retail spending locally, different types of uses, you know, people dine out or not, sometimes they have cafeterias inside the facility. Local retail spending per employee, we keep that the same. Total local retail spending, annual sales tax, another revenue source for the community. And, and it's just a quick way to compare two different land uses in terms of what does it contribute to the community. Now, one thing we'll do throughout the process as we go forward, again, it's not to say, "Oh, that's it, then we always have to do that", because at some point, you know, that's saturated, too, you know? So you want to make sure you've always got that balance. But another aspect of this analysis we can do is that different land uses have a fiscal cost to the community. We always say residential typically costs more than commercial, that makes perfect sense. And so there's that balance. But again, the most important thing is that you just have more information, all the information possible, to make informed decisions beyond just kind of the handful of, of information and criteria that you've been given to date, and you, like many communities. So we're kind of on this quest to make sure our city leaders have kind of the whole gamut of information when they're making these critical decisions for their communities. And that is, I think, it.